Good evening and welcome to the May 28, 2015 Xenia City Council meeting. We've been an executive session since 5:30 and then spending the last 45 to 50 minutes in a special session discussing the Play Xenia Parks Plan, which was a very exciting bit of development that we'll be moving out on this year. We'll open our regular meeting at this point with the invocation led by Reverend Kelly Shin from Memorial United Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Lauterback. You would rise with me for the invocation and pledge, please.
Let us pray. God of compassion and purpose, give now to your servant people here and across our good community both compassion and purpose. To do the good work of your calling, to feed the hungry, to shelter the homeless, to speak for the silenced voices, to support the young and the elderly, to give practical hands and feet to the work of justice. Give strength now to those this evening here who are tired, clarity to those who are distracted, and vision to those who are leading. And we are so grateful, God, for life and community and for work that has meaning. I pray this now in the name of Jesus the Christ, and I also pray with those who call upon you by other names and face. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Reverend Shin and Councilman Lauterback. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Here.
Councilman Kow.
Here.
Councilman Lauterback.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
President Engel.
Here. Thank you. May I have a motion, please, for approval of minutes? First, the May 7, 2015 special session, which was a joint session with Xenia Planning and Zoning Commission and the BZA. So moved. Moved by the Vice President. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Any discussion or question on these minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Abstained.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstained.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Abstained.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, motion, please, for the May 14, 2015 special session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Any... Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion or question on these minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Abstained.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, finally, a motion for the May 14, 2015 regular session. So moved. Moved by Councilman Kow. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on these minutes, Councilman?
I do have one... Just a correction on page nine during my comments. What stated that I noted that who hosted the car show you listed is John Marshall, Detective John Marshall.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on the minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Abstained.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. At this time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the city of Xenia this evening, if you would please step to the microphone, provide your name and address, limit your comments four to five minutes, please. Seeing none, we'll move to reports of committees. Councilman Lung, Planning and Zoning, please.
Thank you. Planning and zoning commission met on May 7, 2015, actually following the joint session we had. There's three items on the agenda. The first one was a request for a PUD modification to allow for construction of a four-and-a-half-foot tall wood privacy fence in the front yard and a six-and-a-half-foot tall wood privacy fence in the side and rear yard of 816 Orbway. The commission voted to approve the six-and-a-half-foot tall wood privacy fence in the rear yard, but not to approve the four-and-a-half-foot tall wood privacy fence in the front yard. The next item was a request for PUD modification, reduce the minimum floor area requirement from 1,600 square foot to 1,400 square foot on the 26 undeveloped lots in the Village of Sterling Green PUD, followed by the developer, One Develop Company and One Development Company. The commission voted to endorse that request, to approve that request. And then, the commission voted to approve the replat of Legacy Center Lot 4 submitted by LGB Incorporated on behalf of the property owner Legacy Ministries International and the prospective property owner of Athletes in Action. Just to clarify, I think that was just kind of a land O'Brien kind of left, but that was just kind of a land split to help those two entities since they share that campus. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Lung and Planning and Zoning? Seeing none, Mayor Bayless and the city manager, mayors and managers.
There are no significant business items. We did have a presentation on the National Executive Air Force Museum, and that's not the full correct title, but at any rate, and their development plans with their new hangar. So it's some pretty exciting plans that major draw to our region and have a good presentation on it.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor or city manager on mayors and managers, please? Councilman Lauterback, MVRPC, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met earlier this month at our new meeting location, which is Dayton Area Board of Realtors. We talked a lot about May being Bike Month. Also, on May the 5th, the city of Dayton launched their Bike Share Program. If you're in downtown Dayton, you see some bright three-speed bicycles. That's a program where you can ride from one location to the other. And I understand, other than a few hiccups, the programs have gone pretty good. Some people are driving the bikes home, but please don't do that. But anyway, that program was launched. And also, the spring dinner was held on April 22nd, and one of my colleagues from Bethel Township won the Regional Stewart Awards, Jerome L. Hurt. So congratulations to him. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Anything for Councilman Lauterback and MVRPC, please? Seeing none, anything to bring to the good of the order from my colleagues under items from city council and mayor?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I was absent at our last council meeting. There was no traffic to report on as far as no traffic meeting in May. So that was missed in that meeting. And we will have a traffic commission meeting next Monday, June 1st, at 7:00.
Thank you very much. Anything else from my colleagues, please? Seeing none, reports of city offices, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, first, this evening, staff is requesting approval of an ordinance as an emergency to appropriate an additional $57,369 into account 228-5102-55508 for the purpose of utilizing these limited-use funds for additional street rehab work as part of the 2015 street program. The second motion is requested to authorize the execution of an amended contract with John R. Jurgensen Company at a not-to-exceed amount of $670,648.67, which will include additional portions of roadway for rehabilitation. As detailed in your agenda report, there are remaining funds in the 228 fund that are not programmed for use based on project bids that came in under projections. Staff is therefore recommending council authorize the use of these funds as part of this year's street rehab program. We're recommending work be completed on Arrowhead Trail due to other street rehab that's slated for that neighborhood, thereby reducing some of the mobilization costs based on the condition of the road and because of the additional heavy traffic load in that area resulting from several schools in the vicinity. We're also recommending that a short portion of Monroe be reworked as part of this project expansion to round out the overall available dollars. There's just a portion of Monroe that sort of is under the condition we would expect of a roadway, so that will finish out, so to speak, Monroe. So with this, with your approval as request, we'll be able to address these additional projects as part of the overall street program for 2015.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Kow. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion or question on the first motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, motion, please, to authorize the new not-to-exceed amount for the contract?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Kow. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the second motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, this evening, staff is requesting two motions. We'll offer roof replacement at the Public Service Center as planned in our five-year CIP in the 2015 capital program. As you may recall, the original bids for this project had to be rejected in the scope of the project reworked some weeks ago. Staff believes that we have a viable project that will fix the leak concerns and provide a good value. However, the lowest and best bid came in at $4,175 over the budgeted amount, and so we are requesting an emergency appropriation ordinance in account 361-1446-55599 to make the necessary funding available. An emergency ordinance is requested in order to facilitate the start and finish of the project during the fair weather months of the summer. Pending passage of the additional appropriation, staff will also recommend council award the bid and authorize the execution of a contract with Cotterman and Company for the Public Service Roof Center project in amount of $104,175. Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency? So moved. Mr. President, as emergency? Moved by Councilman Smith. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman?
When the new city hall is built, what offices presently at the public service building will be moved to the new city hall?
Our planning department, which would consist of the economic development functions as well as community development, so those three employees, and our planning department and code enforcement. So you have both of our enforcement officers and the city planners, so those functions would move to the new facility. Remaining at the service center would be our engineering, so the engineers, as well as the management analysts we have, construction inspection, and of course, the maintenance supervisor staff. And then, the remaining square footage out there will transition for storage for our court records that have to be kept in perpetuity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might add, part of the reason for that, you know, when we do make the transition with those records, the building needs to be environmentally secure, so.
Any other discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next, staff is requesting two actions from council to allow the city to purchase a heavy-duty vehicle lift for the city garage. As programmed in the five-year CIP in this year's capital budget, we had planned to purchase an additional vehicle lift to improve productivity and efficiency in our garage operations. After this original concept was planned in the budget, we made a policy decision to start completing more work on heavy-duty vehicles in-house in order to cut overall fleet maintenance cost. To do so, a greater capacity lift is required, and so an additional appropriation is required to cover the purchase cost. We're therefore recommending an emergency ordinance to appropriate $12,494 into account Pending adoption of such, staff is recommending a second motion to authorize the purchase of a Mohawk TP-20 heavy-duty vehicle lift using the state bid through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services and issue a purchase order to Mohawk Resources LTD in an amount not to exceed $32,493.53. One of the key issues with this, we're doing a lot more of the in-house work on our medic units. We had excessive costs with the contractor that we... or contractors that we had for a lot of our fire fleet. So this, we think, will see a positive return on investment in a very short amount of time, and this will allow us to get those medics and some of the other equipment that are larger in scale on the elevated platforms.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency to appropriate the money?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman?
I just wanted to commend the fact that we're doing more work in-house, which is going to save the city a lot of money. Thank you.
Councilman?
Speaking of our new medic units, I know we've got one of them on the road now. What kind of warranty did we get with the new ones?
I'd have to look. There was a warranty. In fact, it was because we went with a smaller chassis, we got the manufacturer's warranty through Chrysler Dodge. And I can't recall, but I know it was a more comprehensive type of warranty than we would have ever gotten with, you know, one of our industrial engines. They've had real good experience with that new medic so far. Of course, we do a lot of the initial preventive maintenance through Key Chrysler. We can do that locally because it's one of their products, so. I can tell you, though, and a little bit of bad news, we've started our projections for next year's budget, and as we look at that next medic purchase, that platform has gone up in price a fair amount. So we would look for an increase in, you know, even in that smaller size medic in the future.
Other questions, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. A motion, please, now, to authorize the purchase of the lift.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Last item requiring action this evening, staff is presenting a list of budget priorities for the 2016 budget as discussed at our work session with council on May 14. City charter requires adoption of budget priorities prior to July 1st of each year. This year, staff is recommending approval of these priorities well in advance of the deadline in order to better integrate them into the budget process. Therefore, staff recommends a motion to approve the priorities.
May I have a motion, please, to approve these?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on this motion, please?
Mr. President? I'm going to be voting in favor of this priority to support 99% of them. I'm assuming that... I do not support the streetlight assessments. I'm assuming any action taken on that would require additional legislation fees.
Absolutely. And we have among our follow-up bases information to come back to council on specifications for that.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you very much. I too am going to support this, but I will not support any downtown bikeway that eliminates a traffic lane on North Detroit Street and do not support the streetlight assessment either.
Councilman, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. I concur with both Councilmen Kow and Lung. As far as the streetlight assessment, I cannot support that. And the downtown bike path is... We have a lack of parking the way it is, and I cannot support that. So, thank you.
Other comments or questions, please? I participated in this budget priorities development, and I would like to commend the staff and management for their superior efforts to bring these together for us and to fully explain each and every one as to why they believe that to be a priority. So kudos to staff for this, and I am supportive of it in total.
Same here.
Yeah, I participated as well. Excellent job of putting this together.
Thank you. Other discussion or question? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Just a couple of overall updates that I want to provide for council finally this evening. First, Friday is June 5. Next Friday, we had a spectacular turnout at our first Fridays in May. We expect a similar turnout. We, from what I've told, we're, I think, expecting the car show to be a little bit bigger even this time. We're actually working with the county to try to use the clock tower to get some aerial photos of the event for marketing purposes and other things. So it'll be interesting to see what we get. But again, we encourage folks to come out June 5. And a reminder to start planning for the July 1 Fridays, which will be in conjunction with the fireworks festival down at Shawnee Park. Staff doing a lot of planning on that. I will tell you candidly, we're excited but a little bit overwhelmed. We think it's going to be a well-attended event. There are lots of activities, and so some good activities going on for folks. Had the opportunity with several of the staff members, and I know Mayor Bayless, not sure if other members of council were there, but the night of champions two weeks ago at Athletes in Action, they had one of the best turnouts they've ever had. I think it was a very successful fundraising event for them. Got to revel in those with Clark Kellogg and some others from Olympic fame and NFL fame and other things. A fantastic event, and again, one of the hidden gems in our community, Athletes in Action. And to that point, they have made public an announcement that they are moving forward with construction of a, what they are calling the Wooden Center, which will be approximately a 100,000-square-foot new facility with indoor basketball courts, indoor soccer, significant amenities, significant project on their campus, and a significant addition to our community. They are projecting that that venue will host, will allow their overall unique visitors to their campus to increase from the current 80,000 to over 300,000 unique visitors a year. So that's a lot of additional traffic that's coming into our community and presents some real opportunities for us. And I might add, is contributing to some other positive conversations we're having related to some development opportunities. So excellent opportunity for our community, and we're very, very excited to see them continue to prosper. We'll have more information on that project in our summer newsletter that'll be coming out here in a few weeks. And finally, a brief update. The development director and I did attend the recon, ICSC recon in Las Vegas a week or so ago. We'll be providing council with a report on our activities there, understand... Help you understand why we attended the event and what we hope to get out of it, but we were able to make connection with a lot of developers, a lot of individual retailers, and have come back with some new ideas and some new connections we feel will hopefully yield some opportunities. So again, look for a report here in the next couple of weeks so we can tie all that out. I think that's it. I might just add, too, anybody who saw downtown with the flags up for Memorial Day, got to brag on our staff a little bit because the downtown just looked fantastic. I mean, the patriotic flair with the flags really put it over the top, but the trees have grown out nicely, the flower beds look nice, the streets look nice being newer. It really... It's a very, very attractive downtown, and I'm very proud of it. Kudos to the staff.
Thank you very much. Anything for City Manager, please? Councilman?
Just a couple of ideas. I mean, I don't know if you've seen the videos that even a kid can take with these helicopter drones. I mean, there was a guy at the races last week flying one, and he got phenomenal video from... And those things go sky-high. They can actually snap pictures. I mean, and for 50 bucks, you can probably get one of these kids to bring his drone out here with a GoPro on it and get all the video footage you want.
And that's interesting.
I might be able to find a kid to do it for 50 bucks. The... What else did you talk about? Not the flags. There was one other topic I wanted to touch on, but I forget at this point.
If it was a compliment, I always remember.
Anything else for City Manager, please?
I'll think about it.
Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, scheduled bills in the amount of $122,247.73.
Motion, please, to pay our very modest bills for this two-week period.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion or question on the bills, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next, this evening, staff is requesting two actions from council to allow the city to purchase a heavy-duty vehicle lift for the city garage. As programmed in the five-year CIP in this year's capital budget, we had planned to purchase an additional vehicle lift to improve productivity and efficiency in our garage operations. After this original concept was planned in the budget, we made a policy decision to start completing more work on heavy-duty vehicles in-house in order to cut overall fleet maintenance cost. To do so, a greater capacity lift is required, and so an additional appropriation is required to cover the purchase cost. We're therefore recommending an emergency ordinance to appropriate $12,494 into account 709-1446-55599. Pending adoption of such, staff is recommending a second motion to authorize the purchase of a Mohawk TP-20 heavy-duty vehicle lift using the state bid through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services and issue a purchase order to Mohawk Resources LTD in an amount not to exceed $32,493.53. One of the key issues with this, we're doing a lot more of the in-house work on our medic units. We had excessive costs with the contractor that we... Or contractors that we had for a lot of our fire fleet. So this, we think, will see a positive return on investment in a very short amount of time, and this will allow us to get those medics and some of the other equipment that are larger in scale on the elevated platforms.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency to appropriate the money?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman?
I just wanted to commend the fact that we're doing more work in-house, which is going to save the city a lot of money. Thank you.
Councilman?
Speaking of our new medic units, I know we've got one of them on the road now.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Second item is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for Kemper Controls to upgrade the alarm system at the wastewater treatment plants at a not-to-exceed cost of $46,800, originally introduced by Councilman Kow.
Sub move.
Move for passage, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Since we have no law director, we'll move directly to our summary of action items. Any updates to what is there, Mr. City Manager?
No updates. I didn't say we did mention the streetlight assessment. We will have a fact sheet coming back soon.
Thank you very much. Anything to add to or take away from our action items, Mr. Vice President?
When, we ran out of time a little bit. When do we think we, on the park plan, that we might be able to have a schedule back with more detail?
I think that we do have the funds budgeted. The next phase, what we'll do is we'll have to go into the formal design, particularly for the supply capital, but in overall formal designs, we'll have a contractual process. Some of the work, as Brian indicated, some of the work, I think, at Solarness, potentially at Sterling Green, could maybe be done yet this year because we have the funds budgeted. I think we could move forward with some of the in-house staff, you know, staff-done work potentially by the end of the year. But I think within the next few weeks, we can probably get a more precise schedule and share that with you, and then as that gets more detailed as we get through the summer, then we can bring that back.
Thank you very much. Anything else, please? Seeing none, reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to thank our veterans for their service, and had a good Memorial Day, a little under the weather right now. Also like to just thank God Xenia's escaped the tornado on Tuesday, and our neighbor Beaver Creek got it. And not to be funny or anything, but I don't think anybody was expecting that Tuesday night. I was driving to Huber Heights and 70, like I hit Niagara Falls or something, and it was crazy there, too. So just, it's the weather, and we can't control it. So I think, nobody mentioned, but you might have more information, there's a bike race, I think, Sunday? Is that right?
That was in my list of things to mention.
Do you want to talk about that now?
Yeah, Zini will be hosting the Tour de Zinia, the Criterium Race. We've got letters that have gone out to all the affected folks in the area, but the race will be headquartered around Shawnee Park. We are inviting the public, expecting between 300 and 350 racers. This is a qualifying event for various other larger-stage races, including Olympic trails potentially. Significant race, bringing some nice economic opportunities to our community, some great sponsorships from regional and local businesses as part of this event. We're expecting between 2,500 to 3,500 visitors for the event. So all day long, Sunday, starting, I think the first race is starting about 8:00, all the way through about 5:00 PM. Really interesting, they'll be going up some pretty good speeds around the Shawnee Park area. If you see feathers fly, it's because they hit a duck, so we're hoping that does not happen. But we're excited to be hosting this, so we think it's a neat opportunity to put Zini on the map again, related to the trail system and bicycling.
Is, there going to be road closures?
There will be some road closures in the immediate vicinity. We should have some information. Again, we've been trying to get a lot of last-minute details worked out. It's an event that we're not familiar with hosting, so we're, you know, we're learning as we go. We should have more information on the website, Facebook. We'll be publishing as much detail as we can in the next couple of days. But again, folks immediately impacted in the area have been sent letters, but we don't have as much broad public outreach as we would like. Again, it's a new partnership with a new group, so, but again, we'll try to get more direction.
Is this a yearly thing?
The goal would be to make this an annual event and to continue to see it to grow and expand, and they already have some ideas on some expansion opportunities for next year.
Good, okay. I don't like to apologize to the mayor, I didn't make the prayer breakfast this year. I missed it for the first time, so I heard it was well-attended, and it was moved, right, to the community center?
Right.
Okay, so, and who was your speaker for that?
The president at Cedarville University, Dr. White.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. Congratulations to our 2015 graduates. Zini High School's graduation last week, 15 students a distinction, and then the Career Center graduates for the day before that. I did want to make note that they said, I think, senior high school graduates acquired at least $5 million in scholarships this year, and I believe 74, that's 78 percent, and Ms. Mills, you were there, are going on to colleges. And there was quite a few kids that have signed up for military service, so I'd like to thank them for that. And congratulations to, I don't know if I mentioned that tonight, but your son was one of the graduates at Zini High School this year, so it was good. It's always that better center, and they always put on a really good show there. Did make it last week, or two weeks ago in time to just participate a little bit with Volunteer Day. Unfortunately, we didn't have the crowd to really help the street, the city workers that came out, but I did thank them for being there. And of course, May is a busy time for everybody, but I saw Councilwoman Mills there, and I was there for a little bit. So we planted a few flowers here at City Hall, so, but had to leave for a little bit and renew my license, and then I think you had to leave for a little bit, but at least a little bit of work got done, so. And again, I'd like to thank city staff for the presentations we had tonight on the parks program and the work that you're doing. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Kow, please.
Thank you very much. One of the things I was going to mention was with Athletes in Action, I believe they have some sort of deal worked out to have some sort of semi-professional football team playing out there this year also.
What other details, but I've heard that one, too.
Not sure all the details around that, but I think with that and the addition of the new facility, I mean, it should go a long way in any of our talks to trying to bring in other outside lodging to the area, which is desperately needed. Also, like to congratulate Austin Newell and Alex Wickline. They received our, they were two of the three Zinia Weebuck scholarships that we award. In the past, we've done one scholarship. We increased it to two last year, increased it to three this year, and hope to continually increase that number. We'd like to get more people applying for it. I don't think a lot of the people that go through our organization realize that we even offer that scholarship to anyone who has played in our organization for a year. So congratulations to those two Zinia graduates, and then there was a Carol graduate that received one also. The last thing would be, I'd like to wish two of my very close friends, Dale Lauterback and Becky, a happy 48th anniversary yesterday. So congratulations to them.
I don't look like I'm that old yet. Never.
He must have been a child groom.
Well, actually, she was in the fourth grade and I was in sixth grade at Spring Hill Elementary. That's how that all came about. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Mills.
Well, thank you. I do believe that Councilman Smith and Mr. Merriman looked at my notes because they said everything I was going to bring up, but I'll repeat a few things. I want to thank the city staff and Carol Atzbach from Braca and Councilman Smith for Volunteer Day. Our city looks beautiful, and I really appreciate all the hard work that goes into doing that. First Fridays is coming up in June, but not only First Fridays, but we have activities on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So I really encourage everyone to come out to Shawnee Park. First Fridays will be on June 5th, and at Shawnee Park at dusk will be the movie Big Hero Six. It's a Walt Disney movie, it's a wonderful family show, so please bring a blanket and a chair, and popcorn and drinks are provided by Faith Community Church, so all you need is a blanket or a chair to sit on and come and enjoy the movie. On the 6th is the fishing derby. The pond is stocked and ready to go. It is for the youth of our community, ages four through 15, I believe, and there's prizes and great gifts for everyone, so please come and support your community. And if your children like fishing, they have a wonderful time. And on the 7th, which is Sunday, is our kickoff of our band series. So we will have the Ohio Valley British Brass Band there as a 40-piece ensemble that have just great sound and travel quite far distances from here, and we are very privileged to have them as our kickoff band. I wanted to remind everyone to mark their calendars for July 3rd, that it is going to be a great time, start downtown with First Fridays, go on out to Shawnee Park, and have all the activities there. The movie that night will be the Lego Movie, another great family entertainment, and I believe sometime during the movie, we will have intermission, and during that intermission, we will have fireworks display. So it's something that Zini has had in the past, but it's been many, many years, and we're very excited to bring that back. And again, I'd like to say congratulations to the 2015 graduates of Zini High School, all 261 of them.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lauterback.
Thank you. Few items this evening. I wanted to give a shout out to Eichmann's Downtown Zinia, longtime business in Zinia. Our dryer went out Saturday morning about a week ago. I called a couple of the local companies, and the earliest one that could come out was Wednesday, the following Wednesday. So I don't know why, but I didn't know Eichmann's repaired appliances, so I called them, and within two hours, they came out and put a new part on our dryer, and it's up and running. So I just wanted to, whenever you can shop local, Eichmann's is a longtime business in Zinia, and they do an excellent job, and I didn't know they repaired appliances, but I do now. Also, for full disclosure, I'm a board member of the CAP, Community Action Partnership, and we had a board meeting, and I asked them, we moved, we have a new location on Allison Avenue, and I asked them how the city treated them, and they had nothing but praise for Brian Forshner and Jeff Ziegler, so I just wanted to pass that on. I know a lot of times we hear the negative news, but again, they were very happy with the service they got. Also, Kiwanis did the landscaping on the corner of North Detroit and Weaver. They did a great job, and Kiwanis do a great job in the community, and sometimes they don't get enough credit, so I wanted to give a shout out to them. Also, I was unable to attend the awards ceremony for Zinia High School, but my annual scholarship was given to Grace Huffman. Her parents' name is Greg and Kelly Huffman. Her activities was marching band, leadership team, pep band, jazz band, chem club, and more importantly, National Honor Society. She will be going to Wittenberg University, majoring in history. And again, this is an annual scholarship that I give out, and congratulations to her. The last thing, XACT has a play coming up, Arsenic and Old Lace. The opening night gala is May 29th at 6:30. Then there's performances May 30th, June 5th, and June 6th at 7:30, May 31st, and June 7th at 3:00 PM. Please support our local theater. And lastly, XACT is having a children's theater camp Monday, June 8th through Friday, June 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. I think our XX, didn't their air conditioner go out, too? Yeah, they're looking for donation. Yeah.
This is their air conditioner that's servicing their gallery. I believe the city had granted them some monies through a grant this past year for their other air conditioning system, and the second one now has developed some fatal flaws.
Okay, so if anyone feels so moved, make a donation. The Athletes in Action, just to kind of piggyback on that, the two individuals who were on it this year are Lauren Williams, who's a four-time Olympian and a three-time Olympic medalist, and then Todd Peterson, who's a 13-year NFL veteran. And again, that was a wonderful event and a great big crowd of people. Proclamation was given to Altrusa, and so I congratulate the local chapter of Altrusa International. They were chartered May 21st, 1990, so they celebrated 25 years of service. Then congratulations to the Zinia High School graduates, as well as those at Payne Theological Seminary, and then the upcoming Zinia Christian High School graduation is June 1st. The mayor's prayer breakfast was very well-attended, excellent support from the community, and appreciate the city staff being there to support as well. The president of Cedarville University, Dr. Thomas White, was the speaker, and he gave a superb message about faith. Proceeds from the event go to our own cleft here in Zinia. The cleft is a youth outreach for middle and high school students. It offers students an inviting place to gather on Fridays, and they creatively share the message of Christ. The cleft is open from 7:00 to 10:00 every Friday. And then the race on Sunday, I think I'm a starter, am I?
I think so.
And it's at 8:00?
It'll be late, it'll be late.
I know, because I wrote down 11:00, so it's at 8:00.
Oh, my gosh, 23 hours late.
Right.
You have a bicycle, Mayor, aren't you, on the starting line?
Yeah, right. Well, I will be there at 8:00, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
I'd just remind everyone, there's a 5K run or walk to benefit Schindler's, the Schindler House of Arizona, to benefit homeless families. That will also be on June 6th, I think, in the morning also. That's going to be a busy weekend in the city.
Very much so.
And I just want to personally thank all the volunteers at Braca, the bike race, the fishing derby, July 3rd, First Fridays, moving the parks, moving music in the park. I meet a lot of volunteers who spend a lot of hours this spring and summer to make these events happen, and I probably didn't even name half of them. So just thank everyone in the community who gives just a little bit of time to make sure those, that there is things to do this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have two very brief items. One, echoing some of my colleagues' comments, congratulations to all the graduates this year. They are an incredibly well-rounded group. I know a number of sports scholarships were obtained, as well as other scholarships to varying places. My daughter's friends with many of the graduating seniors, and there was lots of joy and tears to go around as they say their soft goodbyes, as people now go out into the world and go to either careers, the military, or to, onto colleges and start that next phase of their life. So congratulations to them and best wishes. Secondarily, a rather serious topic, and I don't wish to alarm anyone, but we've all been seeing in the news in regards to the growing threat from extremists, violent extremists. We've seen that in Texas in terms of the attack that took place down there that took several lives. We have had Wright Patterson go to a higher level of force protection than has been in years since, I believe, the 10th anniversary of 9/11. And all that for obviously very good reasons, according to our federal government. My observation to you would be just one of enjoyment this summer, but also caution, as is characteristic of this groups, they seek out large groupings of Americans that are essentially going about their daily lives or enjoying themselves at some kind of memorable event. My observation to you, if you see something that causes you concern, do not hesitate